So we will call the Desires City Council's Special Health and Safety Committee meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Members present are Mark McKeever, Bruce Truka, Andrew Schonk, and Kevin Myers, Chair. I do want to say first of all, if anybody did not sign in on the sheet out there, we'd appreciate if you would do so. And we're going to start with public participation, and I'll turn the floor to Mayor Reese.
That would be me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a little background, some things we've learned on this project, which we call the North Sandusky Avenue Project. Project started in 2016, when we got where they were receiving the Small Cities Grant. It's been through Traffic Commission, it went then to Planning Commission approved it, referred to Plating Committee, and then to Finance Committee, where it's still in what's called Open Projects. Here's the most current update of the project that we know. Beginning in November, our engineer Branstadter Carroll, Representative Tim Branstadter, believed that the city needed to have a traffic map changes with legislation before he committed what's called a Phase Three paperwork on December 14, 2018. Therefore, Traffic Commission discussed it, and then recommended amendments of the Traffic Commission minutes to the Health and Safety Committee. The letter of recommendation was read to Council on December 4, and these items are have been tabled. What we learned is legislation is not needed to be completed before the Phase Three submission on December 14. So we don't need to have that legislation done before Friday. We spoke to Mark Chaffra from ODOT yesterday. Actually, it was an email. He emailed sample legislation, and it'll be forwarded to the city as soon as a consultant finishes the associated cost of the project. The legislation will be for the approval of the project, just for the approval of it. ODOT will need to have this submitted to Columbus by February 18, so we have about two months to get that in. Spoke to Chris Brown from ODOT today, and called just to talk to us, and Mr. Wagner just to clarify that the project funding is not in jeopardy if the parking is not removed on North Sandusky. Okay? So it won't be canceled if we don't remove the parking. There may be more costs for the city if we don't remove it, and that would possibly include moving utility poles, and possibly could be moving the curbs too. He advised that the city could ask for a variance to leave the utility poles as they are. If a study of the last three to five years would be completed for any accidents that happened in the North Sandusky corridor. So we have to do a study, and if it's shown that the poles had not caused accidents, then we possibly could get a variance. So that could be implied for too. Now, what we would like to do, which gives us, because we know now we're not under the timeframe, time done like we thought, like Branstadter Carroll thought we were under, and relayed that to us, we would like to host a town hall meeting in this location, Council Chambers, on January 10, 2019, at 6:00 PM. And this will allow two meetings for Council after that town hall meeting to consider legislation. So this gives everybody the chance to gather their own opinions, and on the businesses in that area, and the businesses in the park, industrial park. And that we'll have at that meeting then will allow us to have an ODOT, Ohio Department of Transportation representative here, as well as our engineer Branstadter Carroll will be here also at that time to answer any questions. So that would be a town hall meeting on Thursday, January 10, at 6:00 PM in Chambers right here. We've kind of narrowed it down to three options. There may be more options. These are the options that we'd like to have you consider. First one would be no parking on the east side of North Sandusky with a bike lane, and you could leave the west side of North Sandusky as-is, possibly having to move the curbs and the telephone poles. We discussed last week adding an alley on houses North Sandusky on the west side. We're looking into that right now. That gives us a little more time to look at that. But it looks like that's certainly a possibility that can be done. The other options, leave the parking as-is, not change it at all. And of course, those are all options in addition to our original plan, which was a big bike lane on north and south Sandusky. Then in your packets there, you have a timeline. I'm not going to read all those things to you, just for the sake of brevity, but it shows you, it started in March 4, 2016, which the Traffic Commission informed that we repaved project for North Sandusky Avenue. Then went on to planning, so and so forth. They approved it in early 2017, referred to the Plating and Finance Committees in January And project was put on hold at that time, about a year ago, as we're waiting for the cost, so we need to figure out what to put in there. And then it picked up steam this year, and I'm not going to, you know, get it all things, but it was put on city website for 30 days in September, and then all the way up to today, where I'm reading the timeline info to Council explaining the project and planning for the town hall meeting. So that'll all be submitted in the public record, and it'll be on our website too. So, okay, any questions for me, Mr. Chairman?
Well, first I'll ask Andy, Bruce, and Mark if any of the three of you have any questions from there, and then I'll open it up to the floor. Anybody in the audience have any questions that they'd like to ask the mayor at this point? If you do, you can step up to the podium and state your name and address.
I'll start.
Thank you.
My name's Leonard Cord.
Your address, please.
91 North Sandusky Avenue.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know this project doesn't affect me as much as, you know, my neighborhood and, you know, sort of family around my neighborhood, you know, how taking a parking away from us would affect many people. It's knowing that, you know, in the evening to overnight, there's been, you know, five, six, seven cars parked there overnight. And there's a lot of times there's gatherings, you know, families have their holidays and what have you. Where are they going to park? They usually use, you know, North Sandusky pretty full, you know, during the holidays or special occasions during throughout the year. And my question really is, why bike path? Bike's been going up and down that street for 20-some years, and no accidents. So why on one's a bike path? The bike path is very, very minimal. People will use that compared to how many people you put off the streets, you know, and then, you know, I hear a lot of speculations, the state says you got to do this, you got to do this, and if you're giving this, then, you know, the city's forced to do this and that, you know, like if you don't put the bike path in, you have to widen the road. That street cannot be widened anywhere. No matter if you want to take an inch here and there, that's only way you can widen that street from a hospital on up through there. I mean, we have, what, a two-foot from a sidewalk to the curb to widen the street? How are you going to widen that? Are you going to bury the utility lines? The only way you can get wide with that, by burying them, where you can't, if you're going to glue the utility lines. And, you know, there's a person that has to use parking for handicap reasons, and then they would have to walk 50 feet to the back of their property to get in their car if that parking is taken away. So that's my, that's a little bit, I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hord.
All right, is that it for now? I mean, if you'll have any questions.
Just a couple of things I'd like, so that everybody's clear. Lisa Allsept, 1323 North Sandusky Avenue. A lot of people don't understand how far out the city intends on putting the bike path, and I just want to ask for sure, because I was under the impression the other day when I left, I could be wrong, that it was going to stop at the bypass. Is the bike path just going to go from Perry Street to the bypass?
I don't have the drawings in front of me right now to see exactly where it ends. Do you have?
Will all that information be available to us?
Yeah, we'll have our engineer be here, they'll have drawings and discuss all that, yeah. That's what that meeting called for, just to give you all the details and all that.
Lisa, the way I had it explained to me was, this particular project goes up pretty much to the bypass, and then it would be a separate project that we would undertake to make the rest of the way out to the industrial park. So it would be two separate projects, this being the state. So that's where I think where that comes from, that...
So the state is going to be responsible for funding the bike path from Perry Street to the bypass, but the city is going to be responsible from the bypass to the industrial park?
Well, this is a state project we're talking about now. They're going to fund, I believe, 90% of the entire scope of the project, from Perry up to roughly the bypass. I think it goes to Melcher in that general vicinity, and then at a later time, we would then have to undertake going the rest of the way out. So it's two separate projects. I think that's where the confusion might be.
And is the bypass going to continue, I guess? Where is it coming from? How is it getting to Perry Street? I mean, people aren't just going to start there. Is there a plan somewhere that this bike path is going?
January 10, we'll bring in, I have the engineer here, I'll install the special...
You'll have all the drawings for that day?
Right.
Okay. Well, I just, I still want to let the committee know that I'm absolutely against it, not just for the inconvenience of losing parking, but I think it's going to be more than an inconvenience for the side streets, because that's where we're going. The people that live on that street, I'm going to park on Emerson, which is where people are parked. If I have a family gathering, I'm going to fill Emerson Street up. I mean, people have to get to my house. And there is only room in my driveway for two cars, and they're small cars. It's not, nobody can drive a pickup truck and park in my driveway, because then there's no room for another car, where I'll be hanging on a sidewalk and subject to a citation, because you're not allowed to park across the sidewalks. So just one way.
Thank you, Lisa. And also, I did, when I read through the people that contacted me, I had one, well, I had two more. Mr. Hord spoke here in the seating. I had another resident, Ann Williams, of 1200 North Sandusky, that did call me, and that was one of her concerns, was the side street parking. She said that whenever there's a playground or theater, she would have to park there on Songer, and she felt that if she left to go to the store, eat dinner, and came back, she may not have a place to park. So I told her that I would share that with the committee and make that public.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing. This is being ODOT-ed. It's an ODOT-sponsored project, but it's under the Small Cities Grant. This is money that's made available to particularly small cities to help with things like this, that if we had to take on the responsibility of paving all of these state routes within our city, I mean, that's all we'd have money to do. We wouldn't have the money to do anything else. So we went out after the Small Cities Grant through our engineers and through contact with ODOT, so that helps make all of this possible for us.
Any other comments from the public? Go ahead and step to the podium and state your name and address, and go ahead, please.
If you pull the microphone down just a little bit, I think it's turned on.
My name is Diana Miller. I live at 1702 West Southern Avenue. I don't live in that area, but I don't think traffic and bike lanes will mix well. I don't know if you've ever been to Marion on 95, where they have one from Coles up to the university. You never see anybody on that bike path. If I rode a bike, if I rode a bike in that area, I wouldn't be on it. The traffic's crazy. And I think it's a waste of time and money of the taxpayers, and how many people would really use it? And that those guys say there's no place to park? Have you ever lived in a park before where you didn't have place to park? I mean, that's going to be their problem, maybe. I mean, I don't know, but I think you need to listen to the citizens of what they need to say. And that's all the questions I really had. But I'm not, I'm against it. I think it's a bad idea. They supposedly have a bike trail in front of the cemetery, and a lot of people use that, walkers use it, but it's not really a bike path per se, I would say. But I'm an avid bike rider, and I just think that would be a mistake. I think maybe you're looking at maybe down the road a lawsuit, because somebody gets hit on that.
Thank you very much.
My name's Mary Bolwood, and I live in Nice, Winnebago, North Sandusky. And I'm against, just because I take care of the handicap rather than any handicap system. And I have one parking place in that back, and it was not feasible for me, because it's a two-crossed-blank alley. Those cars come around here, they can hit my van. How am I supposed to get my brothers and sisters? And the van, particularly somewhere not being accessed to the front of my house. I've lived in this house 35 years, and I've never been told that I cannot park there. I book a handicap relative to get them in an house. You guys doing this to me will kill me, because I would not be looking to get a van out. Are you guys going to come now and be taking 20 minutes of van and stuff? I know you won't. So it's not fair to me, to the rest of these people here either. I take my taxes just like everybody else, and maybe five people a month right up that street. Why not put that bike path between two streets? There's no alleys, there are no driveways you're taking there. So that's all I have to say, I just don't want it.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and step to the, everybody will get a chance to speak. We want to hear what everybody has to say.
My name is Ray Dill, I live at 210 Epple Street. I obviously do not have a dog in the fight as far as the parking goes. My concern is the safety part of it. I'm an avid runner. I'm all over the city, you'll be sorry, I'm sure you'll probably see me. See Mark shaking his head. And I consider our bike path out on Mansfield Street probably be one of the most dangerous parts of this city that I run on. We got cars going by you, I know the speed limit's 35, we know how that works, you got cars going 45, maybe 50 inches from you on the bike path. So if this bike path, I call it the bike lane actually, going off Sandusky, right? It's not a bike path. Bike paths are separated from highways and the streets. We call this a bike lane. Yeah, that's correct. And if it's anything like on Mansfield Street, I see someone's going to get killed. Another next question would be for our board director. If the city's calling this a bike lane, who's liable if someone is killed on this bike lane?
It would depend on the circumstances of the accident. All vehicles are required to obey the traffic laws.
Oh, a couple, four years back, I was former school here, someone came up and they wanted to put slow children at play signs all over the street, and he said that the city couldn't do that, because that would make them liable. Is that going to be about the same, or?
No, very different situation.
That's all I got to say, is just, I'm against it, having a bike lane, like I said, up against a street like that, someone's going to get hurt or killed. Um, have any of you ever used the bike lane out on Mansfield Street? Anybody? I encourage you to use it a couple times. Walk it, bike it. Now, no bicycles don't go in a straight line. Bicycles do this. I don't want to dare you to do it, but I encourage you to do it. And you might want to do it coming west, so you can see the cars coming at you, because there's been numerous times I've had to jump out of the way, dodge cars coming over that white line.
Mr. Chairman. Ray, I think that is a narrow walking path to Walmart, the street was, and I remember we repaved that, what, two years ago. We had this discussion about...
You're talking four feet that you're going to make them on North Sandusky, if you're through there, right?
Yeah, it's going to be wider, the one on North Sandusky.
The one on North Sandusky, at least four feet, at least?
The one, I think it's a three-foot lane on, yeah.
Mansfield Street, that's only three feet.
I believe that's only three feet, yeah. But the one on North Sandusky, I think it'll be at least a foot wider, and maybe even wider than that. I don't like to say, we'll answer those questions on the 10. We'll have all the drawings, and the engineer will be here, and then everybody can, you know, discuss it then and so.
A foot here and a foot there is still dangerous, and like I said, I encourage any of you guys, walk out to Walmart and come back, and you'll see what I'm talking about.
My name's Jerry Dolan. I'm 381 Oak Drive outside the city, guys. I don't have any question of your guys' needs. I'm speaking to the thing I do, I'm the guy that draws the bike paths for the Ruppert's Festival rides, okay? And I know that I've tried running through the city a number of times, because I couldn't make sense to me to have a festival, and we can't go through the city, we turn the festival, because we can't figure out a route that was safe. We go from Pickwick Farms right now, we used to do it from the Pickwick Farms. We now go outside the city, and we go over to Sandusky, Upper Sandusky. My suggestion to you to consider is our needs are not as important as their needs, but I would tell you that there are things that you could do that would help us, that would make it easier to route the routes, like the bicycle routes, and make it safer for the people that are on these bicycle rides, or from outside the area, they have no idea what the county is like usually. We get a couple hundred people, they're going in, right? There are things that you guys could do that would help the bicyclists make it a little safer, especially from Pickwick, outside going away. If we can't go inside the city, because there's no way to do it right, there should be things that you could do that would help us be safe from that point on. And I understand it's not inside the city, but it might be part of that project from the state going that other direction.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak?
I have add-on to my question.
How about, I was going to say, the lady, the first lady that's been here the longest waiting this evening, did you want to address? She said it's her first time to come up to council this evening, and I told her that we don't, we're not tough people long, but you want to help me say anything? No?
My name is Cindy Albo. I live up in that area.
Okay, well, we do need your address.
Oh, 209 South Poplar Street.
Thank you.
But I can build for these people, because, you know, where are they? They don't want to park. They have to park three, four blocks away to get to their homes. And I'm with everybody else, I think it's going to be dangerous. I look for somebody to get killed or hurt very badly. I just wish you would do more for the city, like getting jobs here or something, instead of worrying about a bike path, because we need the city to grow again. I mean, I'm not good at this one, so.
That's all right.
But I am against the bike path. I just don't think it's going to solve anything. I think it's going to hurt more than it's going to solve.
Thank you very much.
I have another one. I want to make sure, the requirements, we do not have to have a bike path to get this money, correct?
No, we don't have to. That's what I read around.
So maybe when we get North Sandusky paved and not have a bike lane?
That's what, you know, what council chooses to do, and that's one of the options, you know? And that's why we're having the town hall meeting on January 10 to get, you know...
In the best interest of the city, if Desires could not have a bike path or bike lane, or whatever, you want to call it.
Mr. Hord, you said you had another question?
Yeah, nobody else.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to add it on, because like he was saying, and you said earlier, you know, about, you know, North Sandusky's going to get done one way or another, and we wouldn't be here today if this city didn't come up with wanting to put a bike path there. You know, so, but also, you know, by putting a bike path there, many times a day through this stretch here, I see UPS, you know, delivery vehicles. Okay, now you put a bike path there, they're going to be out in the middle of the road delivering their packages. The telegraph form, when they deliver to these roads, they're going to be out in the middle of the road delivering their packages, you know, and semis coming down on them and stuff. So you can see a lot of problems could happen with the bike path there. And also, you know, this parking situation, I was going to add on to that, yeah, you're going to have these side streets line up with parking, people that's going to park, should be parking on North Sandusky, they're going to have these side streets filled up. And on a given time on my street, there's, people would have to park probably two blocks down, you know, to find parking that they can't park on North Sandusky. And someone said something about adding an alley somewhere. What was that?
Well, we discussed the other night to possibly add in the alley, but we would not do that if we...
I mean, that's not down in the Niners.
No, it's across, it's in north side. Okay.
North of her.
Yeah, north of her.
Okay, down that far. Okay, because they could, there's plenty of alleys around my area. You know, probably more than enough, because she would have to deal with the way the traffic's going through that area, she would have to park in the back of her house, you know, and she would have to worry about traffic going around. There's a, I got four-corner alley right there, you know, and at a given time, you can't really see traffic coming around these buildings, and so, all right, I think that might be it.
My name's Liz Dolan. My address is 381 Oak Drive. And I personally am definitely for a bike lane up there, because I think our city needs to encourage people to use alternate forms of transportation, and not rely so much on cars. I feel for these people to park along there, and I think if the city could find a way to accommodate those people, as well as putting a bike lane in, that is going to benefit our whole community. My question is, what happens if the city does not put a bike lane in? Are they required to move the utility poles and the curb lines and all that? And how much would that potentially cost the city to do?
January 10.
All right, so we're not going to cover this until January?
I don't know the answer.
I don't think we know the answer.
Yeah. You know, as I mentioned earlier in my opening statement, we'd have to get a variance. We have to do a traffic study, a past traffic problems in that area, and then, and then the engineer would be the one to price it out.
Do you know, did they say anything about what the likelihood of a variance might be?
No.
So we don't even know if one is going to be granted, if you ask for one?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know, we do curbs, you know, throughout the city, but I'm not the one to, you know, to even speculate on the cost of that. So that would be the, engineer would have it down to a path, if they're going to exactly want a curb cost per foot, you know?
Well, I just think the project to extend the bike, a bike lane out there, and then certainly extend it out to crossroads would be extremely beneficial. Personally, if there was a bike lane going out to crossroads, I'd ride my bike out to crossroads gift shop and all that, and I know there are a lot of people who work there who don't necessarily have reliable means of transportation, and so hopefully would encourage them to use a bike lane for it.
I was just going to comment, thank you for all your comments, everyone was good. Yeah, the idea of the bike lane was a health issue, you know? We've had some studies done, and we're not, you know, the healthiest county, and that was one of the, get people moving and try to, you know, try to get people moving and exercise. The other thing is, is to get people, able-bodied people that may not have cars, to pave the roads. One lady mentioned a comment that we should spend more time trying to get jobs. We have more jobs in this town than we have people, able-bodied people. We don't have enough people to work the jobs we have. We, we, we don't have enough people to work the jobs we have now. And so we're trying, our idea is to try to get people to facilitate these folks to places like Crossroads that have over a thousand employees out there and has, all of them have plenty of jobs openings. So, just to answer that statement too, appreciate, you know, there's, there's a lot goes in and out, and I know there's, we've had some great comments and there's a lot for council to think about. And January tenth, um, is when, you know, if y'all can make it back, you know, that would be wonderful. If you can't make it back, um, contact us at City Hall or email, contact council on the, uh, access channel or all everyone's contact information websites. I'm in the phone book, call me at home, you know, I'm happy to talk to you, so.
Please.
Um, I'd like to just kinda put it in council's brain too. You guys have mentioned that there was maybe a possibility of an alley. As a suggestion, there is so much land that runs behind my house through those side streets. I know that it's owned by a corporation, the gas station. Um, what a great place that would be for a bike path, where there's no one driving cars, to get you through to the other side of town where the park is. Because isn't there a bike path at the park? I mean, is that considered a more bike-friendly area? Um, might be less expensive than an alley. It's just something that maybe you guys might wanna consider. Um, if you're not familiar with the area or if you haven't spent any time there, that gas station has parking behind it, which is where semi trucks park, rest, sleep, whatever they're doing. They're pulling out of there non-stop. I've raised my son there since he was three, so I was the helicopter mom that was jerking him back from the sidewalk and pulling him back into the front yard because they're coming out. Once they pull out, they're not looking to see if there's a bicyclist coming up, just there is a lot of truck traffic there, so.
That's definitely an option that we'll, we'll take into consideration and look at.
If you're really concerned about the health of busiers and people getting exercise and anything, why don't we do a bike path? Get it off the street. A couple of years ago, I don't know, what was it, two years ago, I don't know, Bruce Street members, we were putting in for a grant to build a bike path from the soccer fields out to where the new water department is now, the new water plant, whatever happened with that, but as a long career, we're gonna build a bike path, we're gonna try to get a grant to do that. And that fizzled out, that's a bike path.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. That's just budget considerations, it's, it's probably looking at, I would say, between soccer field and, you know, probably looking at a million dollars.
There was a grant back then.
There's no, the grants are not that large and, so we have to do it in chunks. You know, so we applied for the very first chunk, uh, and we got that one. And that was the one out Southern Avenue to the Friendship Bridge. So we have a, a master plan that we've developed to take a path all the way on the Sandusky River out there. Uh, and then there's, I, um, I know the Dolans are part of the group that's working on count, connecting, our vision is to connect the cities in the county, and the county together so a person, a family can get on a bike, I mean, let's do it. I know, but the problem is, it's, it's, our budgets are, you know, budgets are tight and even if we would get a, a million dollar grant, the city still has to come up with two hundred thousand dollars and that's a substantial, that's, that's about, you know, um, almost four percent of our annual genial, general.
But if I didn't have a bicycle lane in North Sandusky, is this gonna get somebody killed and concentrate on the bike path?
And I understand that, but, you know, I, I mentioned this guy the other night when you weren't here, you know, um, there's big cities that have bike lanes and there's, and I was just in Chicago about a week ago and, you know, there's, there's. Well, hang on a minute, let me finish.
Oh my God.
Their, their neighborhoods are full of bike riders and they have what's called divvy bikes, where you go and put your coins in and you rent a bike and there's bikers everywhere and there's trucks that do, so, yeah, there's inherent risk, yeah, there is. Uh, in my daughter's neighborhood, and there's bike lanes and she was like, watch out for the bike, watch out for the bike, watch out. So you're, you're always watching out for the bike, um, you know, I mean, but there are, and I'm not trying to minimize the risk, but the idea that somebody's gonna get killed because you have a bike lane, you know, I, I've been on a lot busier streets and a lot more congestion streets in South, in the North Sandusky.
Putting a bike.
And I think, and I, and I, you know, there is inherent danger, I'm saying it wouldn't be a risk, but there's risk to pedestrians, there's, you know, there's risk to cars now as we've had an accident there, so there's, it's, it's done around, there's precedent for it, so. So we're not, we're not cutting edge, we're not cutting edge.
Right, but in a timepiece, John.
I wasn't done. Right, we're, we're not cutting edge here, there's, there's, you know, there's cities smaller and larger than us that have bike lanes, you know? And they went out in Marion, uh, in Marion ninety-five, yeah, that's a zoo out there, where you have four, five, six lanes of traffic and all kinds of retail. I know the lady mentioned that earlier, I, you know, I wouldn't ride a bike out there either, that's, but they felt the need to put that in and for the kids to ride to the campus out there too. Of course, I don't get down there that much, but I have known that too, so. Anyway, what, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna say, putting a bike lane in from Speedway to Melcher Avenue isn't gonna do anything as far as people getting, not getting exercise, it's just a waste of time. And taking everyone's parking that they've had for a hundred years.
Well, they can go south, I could go in the north though. You know, you can go, you can go down, I could go down Plymouth Street, pick up the bike lane, go on the river and come back. You know, I could use that lane on Sandusky, not worry about having to get out in traffic as much, I'm just telling it's in my neighborhood. I, so I would disagree with your statement, but, you know.
Then you'd have to cross driveways, you have to cross the gas station driveway, you gotta cross bypass, on ramps, off ramps. I don't, I don't get your point.
January tenth, see you then.
More likely.
Anything else from the public?
I just wanna say, you mentioned Chicago, we're not Chicago, but my son left the baby for years with his station down there. They have all kinds of bike trails, but they aren't on the highway, they're out. I mean, you can go from one end of town to the next, but you're on the perimeter and it's a safety place, I mean, it wouldn't be like that. So I still think it's a danger.
Again, that's not a bike trail or a bike path, this is a bike lane.
I know.
They're two, you're comparing apples and oranges.
Well, I know, but you're saying we need to get off our dust and exercise.
Well, I didn't, I didn't put it that way, I just said we need to be healthier.
Right, right. And that's still, I know that's a lane.
I didn't use the word dust, I want that to go into the rear. I wasn't commenting about, I wasn't commenting about anybody's physical condition other than my own, so.
Well, you know, the, I worked for the city in seventy-eight and every plan, they had all kinds of plans for bypass and stuff going out to, along the river and stuff, so those plans have been out there, I know since seventy-eight to make bike paths, but I saw the plans. I ride a bike during Ruppert's Festival. My most favorite is out in the country, not in the city. I wish I didn't have to ride in my, ask my wife not even go out in the country to ride a bike because there's, takes one person not to see that bike. You know, and I, I wish the city and, I mean, the state and county would write wider roads or bike paths. You know, you go in some states and they gotta act a nice lane for bikes, you know, pedestrians or whatever. And, um, the safest place to ride a bike is going out to the park, going through the cemetery. You don't, you can get all the exercise you want, you don't have to go from Sandusky to the northern end of town to get your exercise. You know, and if it's a one lane, you're going in one direction anyway, so how are you gonna get back if it's only gonna be a one lane path, you know? One, you know, unless you widen it, what is the requirement? You gotta have five feet for a two-way?
Five feet's for one way and, uh, the current plans that have been discussed show both directions, northbound and southbound.
So, you know, so if you only have one way or, you know, you only can go one way. And where's the people coming from to get on? You know, you know, if you're uptown, you gotta go through the traffic downtown to get on the bike path or any of these side streets, you know, they're, you know, they're not using a bike path to get to the one that you guys wanna put in. And far as comparing this with other cities, they didn't have to sacrifice what we're gonna sacrifice, a place to park, so.
Thank you very much. Anything from any of the committee? Not all entertaining, let's move to the chair. Mr. McCeever has moved in a second.
I do have a question before we conclude. Um, the, the way the grant application was written, I mean, there, I was just looking into the small city program and how, how it is that you apply for that, and they do have a scoring mechanism in terms of how that program awards the grant money. So I, I don't wanna, I also wanna address that at the town hall, at, at least by that time, to make absolutely certain that changing the, I, because I don't know how the grant was written at this point, but I would like to make sure that we aren't jeopardizing the grant by changing, you know, by changing the design of the, the program. I, it does appear that we are at this point.
Mr. Chairman. I, 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 it doesn't, uh, we originally thought that, that it would, you know, but in the conversation with Chris Brown here, uh, doesn't appear that we're, it, uh, we would lose it. And so, uh, Bruce, brands that are BCI, they're the ones that write the grant application. So he can answer those questions on the, the ten, or sooner, you know, if, if you wanna contact him, so.
Well, another thing too, I think, that is worth mentioning at this point too, and I, and this is not a commentary on whether or not we should discontinue parking or continue parking, but as far as the expense of this bike lane goes, the expense of the actual bike lane is very minimal. I mean, we're basically talking about road striping expenses, so from a cost standpoint, this, that, that is not a big cost portion of this project. Uh, so this, I just wanna kind of dispel this notion that we would be putting lots and lots of money into this bike lane, it's really not a big expense of the, of the actual overall project. That's not a comment on whether or not we should keep the bike lane or keep the parking, just from expense structure though, I, I just want to make certain everybody understands that, that this is not a big spend to put this extra amount of road striping in for a bike lane. It'd probably be about the same as if we had to repaint the parking lines, or maybe, maybe more, but I don't think we're talking about a big difference in terms of the overall cost of this project. The cost of the project is the regular road.
Um, was, can, any of the council members contacted by any citizens other than obviously the people that are sitting here with, I mean, obviously there's either people that are for it or against it, but I'm wondering, obviously since last week you guys talked with people, I know I have, I'm just.
I shared mine at the last meeting, I believe, and I don't have that in front of me, at least I think it was six people that, that contacted me last time and two more since then, so mine would be eight plus two other emails, so a total of ten people I heard from.
But none of the other council members, oh, y'all have.
I can't speak.
I have, I have to, I've had a couple of citizens contacting me as well.
I just, I wondered, I wondered if, because basically these meetings aren't publicized other than Facebook or, it's not on TV anymore, so, you know, I don't.
They are on TV.
They are.
If you have, if you have time, well, time, spectrum, if you have that, it is still advertised.
I don't, so they're not on my TV.
Correct, but it is, we do have the city website now and the YouTube channel, two oh.
So it's livestreamed now, so that the public can see it, okay.
It's not livestreamed, it's just recorded and then placed out onto the YouTube.
Okay, cause people have asked me and I'm like, I don't, I don't know, cause it's not on my TV anymore, I just.
You can go on the city website and also the YouTube, but it's not live, but.
But if there is a copy of it.
Exactly, and then every meeting we have, even whether it's regularly scheduled or a special meeting, is advertised with the media at least twenty-four hours in advance.
Okay.
That's my, my.
And when you say the media, Carver County now?
In the telegraph.
Yeah, the telegraph more, okay.
Jenny Vermillion, five fifteen Hill Street, um, dog with my eater, except we're funded, public funding, um, and I appreciate that there's gonna be a town hall meeting January tenth. My first question would be, if I'm, if I'm hearing correctly, this project that we're speaking of from Perry Street to the bypass is primarily being funded by ODOT? Yes? Okay. From the bypass to the industrial park would be primarily funded by the city busiers?
That's the way I understand it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll answer those questions January tenth to get it.
And I appreciate that. And, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm demanding answers right this, this second. My question is, for that second phase, and this, I don't want an answer, I just wanna put it out there, is there funding lined up to continue this phase two? Second question. And this is an engineering question, and I know he's not here and I know you can't answer it, I'm gonna put it out there anyway. If you're going out and you hit the bypass, it narrows, the road narrows under the bypass, there is no room to put a bike path under the bypass, under the bypass. How would that be handled? An engineering question, I understand, I don't wanna answer it, I'm just putting it out there. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. So we have a motion on the floor. Mr. McCeever, go ahead a second.
Second.
First by Mr. McCeever, second by Mr. Schopf, all of the day, or say hi?
Hi.
Motion is adjourned at six forty-six.
We are having a finance committee meeting.
So I do wanna thank all of you for coming, I appreciate your input and, uh, you're free to go, we do have another committee that's gonna meet at this, I'm guessing was the reason you were here, so.
We're, we're just gonna talk about the, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about one day and then we're gonna talk to you on the next day. The legislation that we thought that we needed to, you know, cover in two phases. The first phase is that finance committee will approve the project and then we will with that gross number. And then the second legislation that we have to get is when everything comes back with all the detail. So, uh, that, that's, will be done within the next month. So as soon as we get that information, we should have it all by the tenth and then we'll have a finance committee meeting, we'll do that first piece of legislation and then there's always that second one that we do with that PID number, that consent agreement, uh, that's the one that follows it. So that's our, just the steps that we're gonna be taking for this. So that's all we wanted to let you know tonight.
Okay, so with that being said, can the chairman?
So. Go ahead.
Mr. McCeever, at six forty-nine PM.
We'll wrap it up for the public address on Thursday, we have a special finance meeting for the, uh, the council.
Just explaining how, but, thank you.
And then we have a little extra advance to join us, I like, and instead of, here in the justice.
Oh, okay. I'll, 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 I'll.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay.